Okay, welcome everyone to the August 3rd caucus at Albany on the council. For the record, members present are Conti, Valerie, Smiling Valerie, Fahy, Howie, Flynn, Farrell, O'Brien, Council President Ellis, Douché.
You got the what?
Anani, Council President Anani, Igo, and Robinson. From staff is our clerk Danielle Gillespie, Research Counsel J.R. Pachardo, and Senior Legislative Michelle Andre. From the administration's side, Court Counsel Brett Williams and Amy Levine. Did I miss anybody? No? Okay. Alright, so jumping into the agenda for approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
Oh, you what?
Can you understand me? Can you hear me, Owusu?
Yes.
Can you understand me? Because you were talking, you made a comment. Did you say something?
Oh, no, no, no. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Something on my face? Everybody's smiling. Approval minutes from previous meeting are July 20th meeting minutes. I'll be offering those for passage. Moving down to consideration of vetoes, we were going to be taking up Mr. Howie's reconsidering the veto from the mayor to look to override it. But we've kind of decided, we have 20, 30 days to override it, so we still have time. We're going to try to get together with the administration to talk through some things. And if we don't, you know, come to an agreement, we have our next meeting that we can override it. But I would like to allow Mr. Howie to speak as this is our legislation. Can you hear me, Mr. Howie?
There it goes. I had trouble on mute and I had to do it three times. Yeah, everybody, you know, this did pass 12 to 2, but I've gotten feedback that maybe we should negotiate a little bit more with the administration. And it was a big decision to make, and a tough one that I made this earlier this afternoon, that maybe it would be worth waiting the two weeks. This has been gone for over a year for me, and that's why I was hoping to get it out. But I'd rather have a good bill or, you know, something that would make everybody happy than just push, try to force something through. So I hope everybody understands. I know I called everybody that voted for this bill and asked for the support on the override. But at this point, after talking to Jenny and Kelly, we decided let's wait two weeks. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Okay, into further into the agenda to ordinances introduced. Oh, yes, the ordinances introduced. We've got one by Ms. Frederick, who actually was having some technical difficulties, so she's not with us just yet. She had a power outage in her area, so she was trying to get somewhere where she could get connectivity and participate. But her ordinance to introduction will be going to public safety is regarding surveillance technology as it relates to... Okay, there she is. Let's see if the audio comes on. Can you hear me, Ms. Frederick? Can you hear me, Ms. Frederick?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Yes, I can. So right now, we're at... Can you hear me? Did you want to say anything about it? It's going to public safety, and I guess there's not really much more to say about it. It will be taken up to committee. Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Okay, rest of the ordinances at hand. On to resolutions introduced, 728120. It's the seeker review for the 76 project over on second half. Would you care to... Actually, maybe J.R., you could speak forever to that. But it's a part of the process. It's not complicated. It's what it is.
It's just, it's going to planning. It's just the boilerplate for right now. It's pretty empty, but it will be added on. Excuse me, I have somebody's child who's over here. But it'll be amended as we go as further with the seeker amendments investigation.
Okay, so yes, that'll be going to planning for further discussion. That's it for... Actually, did we forget the MC together, Mr. Pachardo?
I saw a copy of the MC.
It was sent out.
Okay, I don't have it.
I don't see it either.
I have it. 738120, our MC for the pilot program.
Okay, yeah, so that's, what we're doing is trying to correct an issue with the last, the last time this was before, said our last meeting, there was an error in the number of units. It was three. There was an error in the number of units. The last legislation said 364, 364 units. It's actually 384. And there was an error in the address, which I don't have that right in front of me. And understanding that Mr. Longo was preparing this on his way out, and then maybe in haste, you know, the wrong document got sent. So the document that got put forward that we passed was had those errors, and we need to amend those. So I want to MC this and correct those errors. Any questions?
Mr. Flynn has his hand up.
Mr. Flynn?
Hey, Kelly, I was going to withdraw my towing ordinance.
Okay, yep, you sent me your text on that.
Which ordinance?
I found out that there is a contract on the towing company, so thanks, Owusu. So I'm withdrawing it for now.
Okay, I have to fish the number out.
Ordinance amending truck owners and operators, vehicles for hire.
Is it 126219?
I believe that's it. And that'll be, he'll be withdrawing it. And I would also ask that of any other legislation that's on the agenda, some of it dating back to 2018, in order to clean up the agenda and kind of shorten it a bit, we have, I would ask that members review and consider withdrawing some of that old legislation. So that's all I have. Looks like Brett.
Yourself.
Just real quickly on the MC, just mechanically speaking, the effect of that will be to nullify the previous ordinance, which was 637120, and, you know, disapprove the city's entry into that pilot agreement, because there's going to be a new pilot agreement that reflects the correct language. And then today's ordinance will, in addition to nullifying the previous ordinance, sorry, resolution, I should say, will authorize the city to enter into the corrected pilot agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else have a... Mr. O'Brien? We're still muted.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to vote on that tonight. That doesn't have to go into committee? Or doesn't?
Well, we, the thing is, we all, it's just a duplicate of what we already passed, correcting it. It's not going to go. If members are satisfied with that, again, those were the differences, the address change and the number of units.
Okay. So that'll be a vote tonight?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I'm misleading that.
Those changes, the only other change is the addition of the language about nullifying the previous resolution. Otherwise, the language is verbatim from the first resolution.
Yeah, we just thought, Corporation Counsel and I thought it would be best to undo the other resolution and re-pass this one as a whole. So it's a whole new pilot agreement, but it's the same content.
Anyone have anything else? A little bit of time before...
I just, I wanted to ask members, and I'll send an email out about this too. We want to like, we've been talking about we doing a whole budget process, so that's something that we're like in the process of doing. Mike's on vacation this week, so I wanted to kind of gather some thoughts from people before we started doing the initial meetings. And then obviously, the full finance committee will be involved with that. And all council members are encouraged to participate as well. And just an update that there's, we should be getting, we got one part of the requested information earlier. David Gallon sent out that, and the detailed projections numbers should be coming out, hopefully, hopefully, if not today, tomorrow. So that is, that's all I have for that. It's also National Watermelon Day, though. So if you're a watermelon lover, you should have some watermelon.
This looks like your hands raised again, Mike. You want to... You're muted, so.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you now.
You're unmuted, Mike.
Oh, yeah, my question was, I know one of the big concerns with the last couple of budgets is we get some surprises, namely, certain people get selected for handsome pay increases, while most people don't. Can we get a heads up very early on if that's going to happen again, and some really strong justification for it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that a part of the discussion going forward, because that seems to be a major stepping point that has for the last couple of years. It'd be good to have those conversations early on, and either work through them or not work through them. But yeah, we typically get that stuff late, and we're trying to manage and sort through it. So we'll talk about that. Owusu, you sure?
Yeah, I think you answered it. Well, okay. As it relates to the raises, I hope it comes in front of us. We in some tough financial hardship, and I, you know, I would thank the Finance Chair for working with the Budget Office to kind of start the budget process a little bit early. But I want to make sure that, you know, any raise that take place this year, that every single council member is involved, and who is getting it, and when are they getting it, and explanation. So I just want to echo it there. We're going through some challenging times, and I don't think this is the time to be giving raises, unexplained raises. So we can't go business as usual in these challenging times. So I hope that the administration, also the Budget Office, include us as it relates to anyone that is, will be getting a raise. Thank you.
And lastly, been having conversations with our staff over the last couple of meetings about reading the public comments during the, during the meeting versus, you know, just adding them to the record. And Judy brought up a good point and sent an email out saying, why, you know, why can't we just, you know, notice this stuff, keep it together as a part of the record, but not, not, you know, have our staff read through them. We're looking to have, you know, the person's name, you know, where they're from, what they're speaking in support of as a part of the comments that maybe Danielle would make. But the body of the, the comments, we're going to just add to the record.
Alfredo has his hand up and tells the time hold.
Okay, I'm not go through that. Just informational. Go ahead, Alfredo.
I just wanted to touch on, last, we spoke about forming a committee to look at the equity in salaries across the city. I'm hoping that's still something we're going to do. And I know it's tough times, but I still think we need to look at our city budget and make sure that, you know, we'll be in fair with people, and that we're not putting our most vulnerable, you know, putting the burden on our most vulnerable workforce. So I do hope that we're still looking at doing that, because that was something that we spoke about last year. And I hope now that just because times are tougher, we're not going to ignore that conversation.
Yeah, and that has been, that was a part of our prior leadership meetings. And I know we have to get back to that. Our last, you know, substantive conversation about that pre-COVID was, you know, we were looking at members, we picked a few members out by name that we wanted to be a part of that effort. So hopefully, we can get back to that pretty soon and get back on track with it.
I have his hand up.
It is still...
Can I go ahead?
Yes.
Trying to leave the stuff on you, Kelly. Last meeting, I had brought up about the in-house paving, and I was wondering, did you, you were going to try to find out for me if that's going to continue. And what happened was, I just, I had a 20-minute phone call today from a person on Beacon Avenue, that they came back, they put up signs last week saying, no parking, we're going to pave, and they didn't do anything. They called DGS Friday, nothing was done, and nobody seemed to know. I tried calling DGS, and nobody, Molly wasn't there, Frank Zupoli wasn't there, you know, Sergio's on vacation. Nobody could tell me why the street wasn't paved when it was advertised, like, you know, no parking. And the people were complaining, and they had to move their cars all week, and nothing happened. So I'm just wondering, did you find anything out about the paving, the in-house?
And I'll have to admit that I had a number of conversations over the last week, or last few days even, with the administration regarding other things. And I totally slipped my mind. I promise you, I'll get, I'll get you an answer both on that particular site or street, and just in general, that list for you.
Judy, Derek, and then Joe.
Two things. First of all, Kelly, I apologize, but I need you to repeat what you said about public comment. I heard the first part of it, but then you started trailing off when you were talking about what is going to be done, what's, what's going to be the, what are we doing tonight and moving forward about public comment and the reading of that. And the second thing, I just want to make sure everybody's reading the second quarter financial report, which clearly shows that when it comes to personnel costs, we are $3.5 million below budget to date. And I mean, if you, if you look at the annualized cost that it should have been versus what we've spent in the first half versus what it should have been, we already have a $3.5 million savings for personnel costs when the administration had told us that they were projecting or looking at the potential of doing a hiring freeze that would save $2.5 million. That's just one piece of information that we can glean from what we've been provided thus far. And I am asking the question as to why are we seeing any cuts and additional cuts in services, or continuing to see cuts in services when we've already met the goal for the hiring freeze would be achieved this year. And I don't want to, I don't want to belabor that point other than to emphasize, we really should be having these conversations with the administration. We should be being provided the information. And we should be participating in the amendments to expenditures, et cetera, to, to the budget that we, you know, approved. So as we're looking forward, we can jump through hoops and try and figure out how we can meaningfully participate. But if in the meantime, the administration has cut $3.5 million out of personal services by virtue of just not doing hiring and not filling positions, then you got to question what role, what's the significance of, of the role that the common council is playing, and how much of the backseat we're being relegated to regardless of whatever efforts that we make. But, so that's just a comment. Feel free to comment on that comment if you want, but mostly I want to find out what we're doing about public comments during the meetings.
Right, we're doing, thanks Judy, exactly what you suggested. We're going, well, this meeting, we're, we're kind of going along the way we've been going and reading them.
If I may just interject really quickly, I've been doing that along with Michelle behind the scenes, so I don't even have to read the comments. And all of the comments you've received digitally by email, with the exception of the ones that came in after six. I believe there are either one or two comments that came in after six, which I will forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gillespie. But so the idea is to do that, just to conserve and save time and energy. If people want to come on and speak, they can come on and speak. If they send their, their comments, then we'll, we'll deal with them in the manner that you spoke of in the email.
Mr. Johnson said it?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, I guess I have a little concern with the comments not being read, as, you know, I'm one that would like to see more people get involved and come down to the council meetings. And I feel like it's a strain, you know, COVID is adding a strain to everything, but it's a strain on our meeting, because it just makes everybody feel even more disconnected to the processes that are going on. So when I heard that, that's alarming to me, and I don't mean to create more work for Danielle or Michelle, but I think that it is a huge part of this meeting that, you know, the, it's like a regular meeting, if it was in person, the people, the person would stand there and read it. So I just wanted to say that. And I also wanted to add, and riding throughout the city, I've been noticing that these trees aren't being cut, and you can't see the stop signs. And, and I was up in Judy's neighborhood where it surprised me, on the street that runs parallel with New Scotland, that runs into Academy. Each of those stop signs, you can't see because the trees are covering them. So that was something that, you know, was alarming up in that neighborhood, but it's something that is frequent throughout the city. And I think that we should take a look at it before, you know, the next thing you hear is someone saying they can't, they couldn't see, they didn't see the stop sign. So that was just something that was alarming that I saw this week.
Richard?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of little echo a little bit what Derek said on the public comment thing. I have mixed feelings about not reading the comments. They are public comments. They're addressed to us as much as to the public. So, you know, I have this, these mixed feelings about how we want to handle the public comments. And if we lose something by just, you know, giving them to us, but not really making them available to the public, or having them read as part of a public meeting. But whatever, just throwing that out there.
Judy, this is the last one, because it's almost 7 o'clock. Go ahead, Judy.
So I just want to respond to that. We have received written comments all the time on legislation that we have never read into the record previously. We make it available for people to either attend via Zoom or to call in and read their comments as Vince Ragusa has done. And that is a choice that people can make. And they don't even have to travel outside of their home. They, you know, it's actually easier for them to travel outside of the home. They can just, you know, dial in. You know, it might take them, you know, a little bit of time in waiting or whatever. But that's the equivalent of them coming and speaking at our meetings is for them to call in or Zoom in and reading every single comment where people have expressed an opinion. We, I mean, if we're going to do that now, then we should be doing that when we reconvene in person, because, you know, then that's a new rule with regard to public comments. And finally, I, I think that we, I think that you get the gist of what people are saying from listening, what their position is. We get the comments. If we want to make a comment about what somebody has said, when we're debating a bill, et cetera, then we can reiterate what people have said if we think that it's significant. There's a lot of ways in which to make sure that people know that their voices are being heard. I also question, if we're going to read every single one of them, then I got to question why I'm getting 10, 15, 20, 40 emails through the course of the day that I then am sifting through.
Yes.
Should I read them or not? That's a duplicative kind of effort. And finally, I want to know that one of our meetings went so long because of reading in so many of the public comments, that one council member could no longer attend. Other people who are observing are not listening to, you know, our entire meeting. So it does also have a different kind of effect on participation in our meetings.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Duchesne. It doesn't, not reading them does not violate anything we haven't done, especially when it comes to in chambers, people submit public comment all the time to us without reading them. So I don't think it's, it's silence in their voice. We get, we get them, we can read over them. But Richard, I do understand, Richard has hand up, this is the last one, because then we have to go to our meeting. Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, I think as long as we offer people the opportunity to come on and give live public comments, all right. As I say, I mean, we're learning a lot about our new procedures and COVID and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, I understand that. But we always want to make sure as transparent as possible. And I also wanted to just, you know, in honor of National Watermelon Day, for Jenny's sake, I don't know, but watermelon comes in many different shapes. This is from the Seneca Lake Wine Trail, the Menorah Winery, if you're out there. And it's called Wondrous Watermelon.
So, see, Richard, I love that you're traveling and vacation a lot, because you're, we get to see your sense of humor.
I'm not traveling any, anywhere near as much as I would like. But I'm, I'm exploring and finding a lot to do in New York.
Thank you.
And just, just, just real quick.
Joe, didn't hold it. Joe, I wanted to say something. Joe, go ahead. You're right. I forgot senior councilman. Joe, go ahead.
I want to save Kelly some time, and Tom Howie, I think that thing on Briar Road, they are replacing a eight-inch water main over there. So I think that's why the signs were up. And until that gets done, I'm not sure when it will be done.
On a pave. Yep, that makes sense.
Thank you.
All right, it is now 7:02. We will go right into our council meeting. Welcome to the Albany Common Council meeting, August 3rd, 2020. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. President, my pleasure. Anani.
Unmute yourself, Mr. Anani.
For the record, he is.
For the record, he is present. Ballerin. Ballerin is present also. Conti.
Here.
Doschett.
Present.
Fahy. Farrell. Councilmember Farrell is present also for the record. Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie. Is present for the record. Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien. For the record, Mr. O'Brien is also present.
When we, sorry to slow you down, but it seems like members are having trouble unmuting themselves. So if you call them and they can't unmute, then unmute them for them. I don't know who, hold on, let me see, do I have that power? I, I can ask people unmute themselves, I guess, but go ahead.
And Robinson.
Present.
Fourteen members present, one absent.
Thank you. And now, can you put up our flag so we can say the pledge of allegiance and have them on the side?
One second, Mr. President. And there's your pledge.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mute myself, thank you. Now we're moving on to our public comment period. Is there anybody in the queue?
There are several members in the queue. I believe Pete Sheehan is with us and was in the queue.
Okay, let them through.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Sheehan. This is Council President Corielis. You have five minutes to speak on any subject matter you wish to speak on at the four minute mark. I will let, you have one minute remaining, so just state your name and your address for the record, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name is Pete Sheehan. I live at 32 Buckingham Drive. And I'm talking tonight about a resolution that was previously passed in, in December, I think it was. Seems like a long time ago. And this was a resolution authorizing and directing the City Corporation Council to enforce the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions dated May 1st, 2017 for 20 parcels located on New Scotland Avenue, South Allen Street, and under Doc Ave. And so this resolution was, I guess, adopted in December. And the common council adopted, the, the hit, the brief history of it is the common council adopted the USDO back in 2017. And to get, in, in an effort to address the concerns of neighbors who are concerned about the allowed height of buildings in that, in that development, now referred to as 563 New Scotland Avenue, the Commissioner of Planning and Development, Chris Spencer, recommended that the then owner FM Prominatory Capital execute a restrictive covenant to address their concerns and obligations that would allow the 20 parcels to be rezoned to only allow for three and a half stories. And that's what it, that's what is at issue here. The, Mr. Spencer helped put together the restrictive covenant to only permit three and a half stories so that the neighbors would have dropped their objections and the, and the respective court, common council members would vote in favor of the USDO. So this action, but you know, by Mr. Spencer and, and the, the execution of the restrictive covenant was not just a private matter. And that's what's been argued before, that it's just a private matter. And it's nothing, it really is not that. It's a public matter. And as, as duly noted by just about every one of the common council members who voted for this, for this resolution back in December by an 11 to 2 vote, it was something that affected the, the USDO. I mean, it allowed it to pass. And so this restrictive covenant was, just real briefly, FM Prominatory Capital for itself and successors signed covenants that the building height was limited to three stories. And within, with an allowed height of three and a half stories fronting New Scotland Ave. Okay, so that's, that's what the, the USDO passed based on that. And people who would have been shopping for a house then with that understanding would have understood that the limit was three and a half stories. And once again, I remind everyone, I'm, I'm sure most of the council members remember this. They vote, they spoke very forcefully and I, and I thought correctly to uphold, to uphold this restrictive covenant. And then the new development came in, excuse me, 563 New Scotland, and the plans there called for a five story building. A lot of people in the neighborhood have objected to it, including myself and others. And there's another history there, but that's, that's not really what this is about tonight. And so FM Prominatory then tried to, tried to basically revise the declaration, the restrictive covenant and get rid of it. Which is fine, except that this was a publicly, publicly coordinated document. And so the, the resolution, which is what, which is the important thing here, is it was resolved that the common council authorized and direct the city of Albany Corporation Council to take any and all steps necessary and appropriate to enforce, to enforce the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions. And that's really what's at issue here. So what we'd like to do, I, I'd like to ask the common council to communicate with the mayor's office that this thing is in effect. And the most important part of it was that according to the city clerk and, and our, you know, the attorney has seconded this section. The clerk said that she pulled the resolution in question and it was not signed by the mayor. It was not vetoed. And if that doesn't happen, Home Rule Section 302 BV says if it wasn't expressly vetoed and was returned without approval or disapproval, the same shall be deemed adopted and will take effect pursuant to the, to the provisions of the municipal home rule law. And that's what I'm asking the common council to do, is to communicate that to the city, to the city administration, you know, to the clerk's office, of course, and planning and everybody else to put the restriction on that to enforce that restrictive covenant that should be enforced.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Yes, Mr. President, but for the record, Councilmember Fahy is present. And we have all common council members in attendance. So 15 present, no one is absent. We also have a guest speaker, it looks like from Pine Hills Neighborhood Association.
Okay, it could be the president, all right.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Hello, yes, this is Council President Corielis. Can you just state your name and address for the record? You have five minutes to comment on anything you'd like to comment on. Councilmembers cannot answer your questions at this time, but if they choose to do so, they will do so at a later time in the agenda, so go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, my name's John Clarkson. I'm the president of the Pine Hills Neighborhood Association and I live at 61 South Lake Avenue. Now, I believe I'm the only one from Pine Hills here tonight. At your last meeting, we had three speakers from our board. I think as you all know, our association has opposed the, the Holy Ordinance 15.81.19. I'm here to follow up on that a little bit. I did send out a note to everyone and I, I don't know if you had a chance to read it or if you all have it, but I will summarize from that and it may provide some additional context as well. As you know, our, our board has voted and we have opposed the ordinance as drafted. And you're now considering potentially veto override, so we thought we'd reach out again. Pine Hills, like many city neighborhoods, is in need of investment. And we're also a group who's been welcoming and appreciative of the USDO planning reform and therefore concerned about changes to it that might hinder viable, otherwise viable development proposals. We've seen a lot of welcome development in our neighborhood since enactment of the USDO. We've been able to work with the developers and the planning department on several new apartment projects, which we think are going to be a great help to our neighborhood and to the city at large. Cities need to grow and change and our future in many respects depends on it. Now, this is not to say, I want to be very clear here, we said it before, that there's no room for change or improvement in the USDO. Of course there is, and we also think common, common council review is entirely appropriate. You are the legislative body. However, our point is and has been that it's best if you do it and it's very important for amendments to be made by working collaboratively with the planning department staff, council, and board. That is the way the system's supposed to work. Now, we are not planning experts, I'm not claiming to be. Many of us have many prior experiences in this environment. But in going through both the legislation itself or the ordinance and the memorandum from the planning board, we noted that there were significant problems of interpretation impact in law and there were alternative approaches that could have been taken. Now, none of this exists in a vacuum. We know, and I know and you know, that there is some tension between the common council and the planning board. This, believe it or not, is often the case between town boards or other groups and planning boards. We ask our planning boards to do and staff to do a very difficult function and that is undertake an administrative review and approval of projects as the, as the laws dictate, both the local codes and the state codes. And often objections are raised to projects by neighbors and by common council members. And where it is something that the planning board can, can deal with or where there is a, a situation that needs to mitigate, they can do it. But their role is to, to look at, look at proposals that come before them and rule on them according to the statutes and the codes that exist. They are not really a political body that takes and do you like it? Do you not like it? Shall we do it or not do it? This creates some pressure. However, even when, or perhaps especially when that tension exists, it's even more important to work through collaboration. That doesn't mean you have to agree everything, or if the planning department says, no, we have trouble with this, that you throw the idea out. The best way it works is if you go back, you push, you ask questions, you work to a point where you have a better product. It reflects the legislative will, but also what we, what we think is probably very good advice from the planning specialists and from the attorneys and those who know the code. So that's the big picture. I have spoken to several of you and there are concerns that I've learned about myself in the past. There are concerns about the annual view of the USDO that has not taken place. There are legitimate concerns about particular proposals that you or others may have put forward where you haven't received the feedback or the dialogue. Okay, and so those are legitimate concerns. No one would dismiss those, certainly not the Pine Hills Neighborhoods Association. What we missed, what we wish for most of all is that the common council and Councilman Howie might consider working with the planning staff to work at some changes to his legislation, which might indeed erase the issues that they saw or deal with them in a better effective manner. And maybe there's a win-win there. And we also hope the issues that some of you have raised with, with me and with others from Pine Hills are addressed as well. If, if the USDO calls for an annual review, that ought to happen. If proposals have been put forward and your questions have not been asked, answered, that is unfortunate. So we agree with that. But we'd like to not mix these two issues and look at this, for you to consider this ordinance in itself. Again, I'm not an expert, but we'd like that you would do that. So thank you for considering our proposal.
Thank you so much. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Mr. President, there is someone that is a participant and I'm unable to identify who they are, but they're calling from a phone number. It looks like 4825100 and they're showing up as a guest.
Okay, well, if we have the, you know, just in case it's a, what do they call? I forgot what they call it. If it's a fake call, we have the ability to mute them. So let them in, let's see who they are.
Good, good evening.
Yes. Hello, this is Council President Corielis. This is our public comment period. You can speak on a topic or subject you wish to speak on at this time, but you have to identify yourself and your address, where you live, and you have five minutes to speak on that subject. And at the four minute mark, I will let you know that you have one minute remaining. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much and good evening. My name is John Sipos, S-I-P-O-S. I'm an Albany resident. I live on South Manning Boulevard. And first of all, I'd like to say good evening, President Ellis and members of the council. Thank you for providing the opportunity to speak with you tonight in the midst of this virus that has affected all of us. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak with our legislature. I would like to echo and support the comments that Mr. Peter Sheehan made a few moments ago, as well as his request and his presentation. And I will try to be brief so as to not be repetitive. But I also and as, support the request and the proposal by Mr. Sheehan requesting that the common council direct the mayor's office and the corp council and the planning departments and other instrumentalities within the city government to enforce the restrictive covenant that Mr. Sheehan spoke about. Indeed, the planning department, the commissioner of planning and was involved in the development of that restrictive covenant. I have spoken to you in the past at public session about this back in, back into winter. The restrictive covenant was a publicly coordinated document. It was very important to what the common council was doing at that time. And it is important, given that restrictive covenant, that that restrictive covenant be enforced. It is part of our rule of law. That's what makes our, our city and our country great. And under, under that principle, the restrictive covenant, especially given that it was developed by, by portions of the, of the city government, including the planning department, that it be, that it be enforced. And, and I would ask this common council to make that request, make that direction to the mayor's office. And I would, in closing, thank you for your time and your patience tonight and thank you for letting me participate. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for that. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
So, Mr. President, that concludes the speakers that were here to provide live comment. If you would like, I can show you the list of people who submitted comments that they had wanted read for the record. And then I will also make sure that those are, those comments are uploaded to Facebook so people can view them, the general public can view them at their leisure, if that's okay with you.
That's fine. So since we have no other speakers at this time, move on. The public comment period is closed. And we'll move on to approval of minutes, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to approve the July 20th of 2020 meeting minutes.
Is there a second on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, non-opposed, motion passes. Moving on to consideration of local laws, Mr. Kimbrough.
All, thank you, Mr. President, all local laws are held.
Thank you, sir. And now moving on to, is there any standing reports of standing committees? Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to let members know that the Finance Committee will be meeting on Thursday, August 20th. And we will be discussing Resolution Number 68.72.20R. And we'll also be reviewing the 2021 first quarter financial report.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy, I think I saw your hand up, Ms. Fahy?
Ms. Fahy? Thank you, Mr. President. The planning committee is meeting this Wednesday, August 5th at 5:30, and we have a lengthy agenda. We're meeting on ordinance 116120 that has to do with parking lots and mixed-use community urban zone districts. That's Mr. Councilmember Kimbrough's the sponsor of that. We're meeting on Councilmember Love's ordinance 106120, which is a rezoning amendment, a resolution by Councilmember O'Brien, 627120R regarding potential brownfield sites, and then three reappointments to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for Andre Lake, Pete Sheehan, and Tina Lieberman. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Mr. O'Brien?
The General Services Committee is going to be meeting August 24th to consider ordinance number 137220 and ordinance number 147220. Plus, I think we are also trying to get ahold of Scott Gallup and DGS to continue our discussion about the uses and revenues from the landfill. Not the landfill, the golf course, sir.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. So that seems, I don't think we have any more reports of standing committees. Move on to next item of our agenda. Consideration of... Excuse me. Consideration of ordinances, ordinance introduced. Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed ordinance 158120 and asks for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Part II of the Code of the City of Albany by enacting a new chapter, 325, titled Surveillance Technology.
Mr. Kimbrough?
It will be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed ordinance 126219 and ask for its withdrawal.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President, remaining ordinance is upheld.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution introduced, Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution 728120R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution Regarding the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Review of Ordinance 96120.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President, to refer to planning.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on that, Mr. Kimbrough, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, motion to add resolution 738120R by majority consent.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution 738120R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council authorizing the execution of an amended and restated payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Lumber Street Apartments, 4 Housing Development Fund Corp., and Ida Yarborough, Phase 4 LLC, and rescinding resolution 63.71.20R, which had previously authorized entry into an incorrect version of such agreement.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. If I may begin to unmute everyone so that they can respond to their names. Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Duchet?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the resolutions are being held.
Thank you. Any miscellaneous business? Ms. Duchet, and then Mr. Howard. Ms. Duchet, we can't...
Duchet's muted. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to comment that I'm very frustrated with the amount of time and energy we are spending and that the administration has spent on defeating Mr. Howie's ordinance. People seem to misunderstand that this ordinance is an ordinance that is intended to protect the public health, safety, and welfare and require people to comply with the USDO without there being arbitrary and gracious waivers of requirements or disregarding of experts such as the fire department. So I'm very frustrated about that. I'm frustrated that it was vetoed allegedly on procedural grounds when that ordinance was passed using the exact same procedure that my USDO ordinance used and followed, and the mayor signed mine and vetoed Mr. Howie's on alleged procedural grounds. Then people are talking about Mr. Howie negotiating the substance of that. So the veto ordinance should have clearly spelled out what the city's objection was, not recite that there is a problem on procedural grounds. And finally, considering the shape the city is in and the problems that we have and the problems that people are having, where we have our parks in such awful disrepair, weeds growing in sidewalks that the people throughout the city are living with, but especially in underserved communities. It's being ignored. Code violations are not being addressed. Vacant buildings are not being addressed. We have trees with branches that people are complaining about. If the city administration spent as much time tending to those issues as it has on vetoing Mr. Howie's ordinance, this city would be in great shape. And I'm pretty upset that that is this administration's priorities is getting an ordinance vetoed that requires the city to comply with the requirements of the USDO and the recommendations of experts. So I just am very upset and feel the need to say that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duchet. Mr. Howard? Hold on, go ahead. Wait, wait, Tom. I asked you to unmute yourself, so you should... There you go.
There it goes. I guess my comment tonight is, this meeting tonight with Zoom has been very frustrating. I can see we had the people who did guest talk, they're still on, Pine Hills and Pete Sheehan. I tried to talk, and I kept getting the message, the host is not allowing you to talk. Now, during a regular council meeting, if I had a point information or a point of procedure, I would be able to speak up and ask that. Now, I did text you, Mr. President, and JR, letting them know that we're having problems. This is the first week that I've ever seen something like this happen, where, you know, as a council member, I should be able to speak up at a certain point. I did raise my hand. I tried to get people's attention that we were definitely having problems, especially during attendance, when they were taking it. So I'm just hoping we can figure out what we did different this week than we did previously. So thank you, I appreciate it.
That's it? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howie. Ms. Farrell? Farrell, and then Mr. Ballerin?
I just wanted to, I think a lot of people sent in public comments today with the expectation that they would be read at our meeting. And I think that's somewhat problematic that that those comments were not read, you know, that that was the expectation. So I don't love that we shifted what we've been doing right before a meeting instead of doing what we've been doing and then saying, moving forward, this is going to be what's happened. So I just, I understand that their information will be out on Facebook and all of those pieces, but I just don't think it's... It's not the way we usually operate or the way any of us like to operate to not give people a heads up when their comments aren't being read into the meeting.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you. I know it's been a very rough summer, and it's not getting any easier for anybody. And I do appreciate comments that we get from our residents, even if they are critical of us at times. It's democracy. And I've been on that side of the bench a lot longer than I've been on this side of the bench. So I get how it is to be on that side. I do want to address the concern that was brought up in public comments, and one of my residents called me about it, the issue with the tow truck company that we contracted with, and potentially the fact that their owners may be a part of a white supremacist group. I forwarded those comments and those concerns of residents to corporate counsel. The corporate counsel is the body that looks at these contracts. And I've asked them to examine this because, you know, we're a city that's 45% black and brown. And if we're going to have any entity be contracted with our city, we need to make sure that they respect all of our residents. We need to make sure that they respect all of the individuals that they're going to be in common contact with while they're working in our city. I also want to clarify one thing. The contract, there was no city funds going to that entity. Want to make that very clear. There's no city funds that go to the entity. What the contract does is allow that entity to work and get cars regarding vehicles that need to be towed. Any entity that is owned by anyone that feels that, you know, 45% of our population or any one individual percent in our population shouldn't be treated with respect, shouldn't get any of our business. So I look forward to corporate counsel looking into that and hopefully being able to address those concerns that were brought up by our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Anani, and then Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quite frankly, I am disappointed in the way this meeting went. And I want to echo my council colleagues, Derek Johnson's comment as it relates to not allowing the public to share their statements in these challenging times that we're in. Our residents want to be heard, and that's why we're seeing all the protesting that has taken place. There are people out there receiving emails and phone calls how disappointed they are that we did not read out the public comment. Again, public comment is not just for us, it's for the public. And to just make a decision right before council meeting is totally disrespectful to the residents of this city. I've said it over and over, God forbid we stay past 8 o'clock. We meet twice a month for a full council meeting. And now the public, you're silencing their concern, you're silencing their issues that they want to see addressed. They want to be heard. We have one of the lowest turnouts in the capital region. This is not what democracy is about. Democracy is about letting the people, the public, get their issues and concerns out. And quite frankly, I am disappointed. I couldn't even speak. It's that the host have to unmute me for me to speak. What is that about? Listen, making decisions not to silence the public, there are so many issues out there. People want to have their issues and statements on record. Now, if we go back in time, in history, August 3rd, 2020, individuals' public comments weren't read. And for one person to make a decision on who public comment is to be read and who public comment is not to be read, it's unacceptable. And I'm quite frank, I'm disappointed. We get paid $20,000, we have health insurance, and now we want to silence the public? This is not what democracy is about. And I keep saying it. If you don't want to be here, don't run for office. God forbid we stay past 8:30. There are some serious issues out there, particularly gun violence. There are data that just recently came out with the Times Union about black and brown communities being arrested at a higher rate than their counterparts. There's an issue going on with the towing company. There's planning issues in the city. And we make a decision not to hear those comments? It is 7:30! It's 7:30! Where are we going? If you have something better to do outside of representing the people that sent you here, then you should reevaluate the reason why you're here. My constituents take time out of the day to write their public comment. Some take at least two weeks just to write their public comment. And for it not to be read was unacceptable. And I'm trying to intervene and say why this decision was made, and it's saying that the host doesn't want to unmute me? This is why... Mr. President, I just want to say this. I am disappointed in today. The actions that were made today, the decision that was made today, I am totally disappointed. We are the capital of New York. This is quite frankly unacceptable.
Yes, you said it three times, Mr. Anani.
And I will say it again!
Thank you.
If this was another country, okay, I understand. If this is another state, I understand.
Mr. Anani, nobody's rights were taken away.
Mr. President, I just want to say this. My constituents were not able to express their public comment. Yes or no?
I understand that.
My constituents are emailing me, they're calling me.
I understand.
And for a decision to be made like that is unacceptable. We work for the people. And it's time that some of my council colleagues realize that. This is not just a video conference or having meetings just for council members. The public want to have a say in decisions that are being made by City Hall. They want to advocate for some of the potholes that hasn't been filled yet. They want to advocate for some of the parks that have been neglected for years. They want to advocate for the failing schools. They want to have a say in the direction of our city. I am disappointed, Mr. President. And I hope this never happens again.
Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you. Jesus Christ.
Hold on, Mr.... I don't know why we can't unmute ourselves.
Mr. President, if I may, there have been some technical difficulties with Zoom today. We've all experienced outages I did earlier before the meeting began. That's impacted everyone's ability.
We're not... We know there's no conspiracy theory to silence council members. This is understandable that it's a technical difficulty and nobody's preventing council members from unmuting themselves.
I think I unmuted myself. I want... Can you hear me? I wanted to follow up the issue that was raised during the night, both by Derek and by Judy, about DGS... by Judy about GGS responses to cleaning, uh, you know, uh, overgrowth around street signs on, on overgrown lawns and things like that. Um, uh, there is, as far as I know, there is no way that I've seen publicly presented that the public is able to track this except C Click Fix, which is not very accurate. Sometimes things don't even get posted on it. Or, you know, like if, like if there's a violation, sometimes there's a big discrepancy in how long it takes to post a property. Sometimes it'll take a couple of weeks to post a property, even though the statute says, you know, that the corrective action is supposed to be done within so many days ostensibly of the complaint of there being a problem. Uh, I wanted to note that, you know, the equity agenda technically requires a reporting mechanism by each department, and I'm just concentrating on general services of all complaints, not just C Click Fix ones, but whether they be by telephone call or letter or somebody walking into the office to complain. The only operation that I'm aware that's actually doing some tracking on this is the Uptown Neighborhood Cooperative, which has been using C Click Fix to record approximately 300 complaints and the response time, and whether it's a complete response or a partial response. Uh, so that will be some data. And, uh, I think they'll come in on the, at our August 24th General Services meeting, because I know that's one of the issues raised in the two ordinances that we're gonna look at that particular night, was the time it takes to do some corrections, particularly with, uh, you know, private property vi- violations. So I just wanted to respond to that, and I say, um, I think we're gonna get a report from Uptown Neighborhood Cooperative as to the percentage of actual time it takes to do corrective action. And maybe, uh, you know, it would be nice to get some kind of an official tracking that would break the data down in the same way that this collaboration of neighborhood associations are doing. And then the other, the other thing, and I'll just briefly, uh, I, I agree with, um, with Judy's comments regarding, uh, the issues surrounding, uh, the override. I, uh, you know, looked, I did look at the comments that came in, and some of them seemed to say it was just an issue of NIMBYism, and yet I think there's a lot more real issues involved. Uh, I hope that the two weeks, uh, next two weeks before we consider it again are, uh, uh, really are open productive, uh, meetings between, um, council members and the planning department and planning board. Uh, but I note that Tom's ordinance was out there for 16 months, and that would seem to be time to bring it to, uh, a discussion if it needs tweaking, uh, to point that out and to, uh, wait until, you know, this last minute today, the day that it was supposed to be, uh, decided upon by the council, and say, oh no, we need another two weeks. Well, I hope that, that, that two weeks is genuine, uh, open-minded, honest discussion, because there's been 16 months preceding it, that I really think it's a safety issue that they have chosen to basically waive, uh, and not a NIMBY, uh, issue on the part of the people that had concerns about that particular project. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Johnson, and then Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to share, um, my concern, because I've received a number of calls, um, during this, uh, meeting of people sharing their frustration. And, you know, as an advocate, a person that is, um, going through the, um, community, um, constantly trying to get people to participate in, um, in our process, you know, uh, I think it's important for, um, the letters to get read, because some people, you know, work at night, some people have, uh, situations where they can't, um, get on. It's fortunate now that we can use Zoom, and, but even that is not an option for them. So, you know, um, in the heart of hearts, I just ask that, um, people, uh, be mindful of, uh, people's effort to, uh, participate in the meetings. And, you know, um, their concerns, you know, a lot of times, uh, give us direction to go in, and, um, I think is helpful in, um, building up the relationship between, um, local residents and the local government. So, you know, anytime we take away, uh, their opportunity to, um, speak, I'm gonna have a problem with it. And, you know, um, I just wanted to, once again, reiterate that, um, you know, not everybody has the flexibility to be able to, um, be there when we need them to be there, and, um, and even, uh, physically, um, get there. So, we should be mindful of that. And, you know, just, uh, remember the, um, amount of meetings that is, sometimes it's one or two people that speak. So, um, if you, um, give people a chance, the numbers are gonna balance out, and, um, I think is very important. But it's a lot of stuff that, um, that's going on in our, um, community, and people are starting to, um, speak out about it. And it just seems like, um, uh, people's opportunity to speak, like, you know, the people can't come to the, uh, state of the state. You know, um, this, you know, the administration detaches themselves from every part of the community. And, um, and, um, you know, there's, there's no way to hold them accountable. So, I just think that we should be mindful that, um, when people, um, take their time out to, um, express their concerns, we should have, uh, try to find a mechanism to make sure that, um, it's heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jo, Ms. Love?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I also, I don't think it was a conspiracy. I was getting phone calls, uh, texts from people that they couldn't get on. Um, and I, and I was telling them, we, we're on and, uh, we're still on. But, uh, it was a decision that you made, Mr. President, not to go on with the letters. I accept your decision at this time, but to get on Facebook while we're doing live, and I'm a, I'm a call you out, Russo, because with anything that we had to say, and you so, that's so much upset, why don't you just call Mr. President to the side? Because I was gonna call him and tell him. I don't think it was a good decision that you made for people's letters not to be heard. But when you sit there and you get so upset, and you air things that you should not say, I think you should be shaming yourself. Thank you.
And, uh, I just want to say for the rest...
Hey, 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 hey.
I was talking to whoever made the decision not to read the public comment. That's the person that I was talking to. I wasn't talking about the president. I was talking about the person who made the decision not to read public comment. That's the person I was talking to. I was referring to the president because of, he's the president, so I was referring back to him. But I wasn't talking directly to the president. I was talking to whoever made the decision.
But Russo, you got so upset, you were a little gasket.
We're not, we're not gonna, we're not going to argue amongst ourselves. We get everyone's point. Uh, Mr. Kimbrough, uh, would you like to address this?
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, it's, it's, it's an idea. No one's rights to speak is being taken away. There were people here in public comment that, that spoke. If you sign up to speak, you get to speak. If we were in, in the chambers, you, we wouldn't necessarily read your comments. That's, this is something that we added and we've been doing to be transparent and, and, uh, and add to, to, uh, our discussions. No one's taking anything away from anyone, a- anyone. And the public, that, they were in here before. The public did, uh, comment. And again, I wasn't aware of the technology issue, but I know I can't raise my hand, and I've been trying to communicate with folks, and I've been getting calls like everyone about the inability to get in. Uh, so that's problematic. But also, the discussion, the comments that I made about this meeting were that we were going to read the, the, uh, the comments this meeting, and moving forward, we weren't going to, because it's, it is wrong to, at this point, just shut it down without any notice. So the idea...
And I didn't hear that part in defense. I think that was the part, uh, we missed when Judy asked them to explain it, and it went out again. So I did not hear that part. So, uh, no, uh, nobody's voice is not being, not heard. Uh, if we were in council chambers and somebody submitted written documentation, we do not read it. We submit it for the record. Uh, that's normal procedure. Uh, being online does not mean, uh, we have to read them. No one's trying to silence anyone's voices. Uh, if the council wants to talk about that during caucus, about changing that rule, anybody writes in, we read everybody's comment, even when we're in chambers, we can have that conversation. Uh, but be, be mindful of that conversation is about sometimes the staff, uh, the strain it puts on our staff. It's just not about not being, not hearing people, uh, comments, because we do get letters sent to us, emailed to us, written to us, that we read ourselves, and those are entered into the record. Um, so be mindful of that. So I, I did not hear, uh, the closing, uh, remarks to, with, uh, keeping it this week. If I had, we would have read those comments. So I don't want us to, uh, think that this was, you know, when you talk about the technology going offhand and all, I don't want us to, to think that, uh, there was something here. It wasn't. You know, I couldn't get on. I couldn't. So I saw, oh, I could unmute people, maybe that'd help. Uh, if I ask people to unmute themselves. So that's what it was. I, I don't, uh, think, uh, that we should, uh, be at each other's, uh, about this. Uh, I don't know how many came in. Uh, if council members, council members want to hear them this time, since, uh, we will be going forward, uh, changing it up, I have no problem doing that. Uh, I don't think the, Mr. President has any problem doing that. So, uh, before I get into Ms. Frederick's comments, uh, if you want to hold them off, uh, because I do agree, I, I, you know, like I said, I, I did not hear him tail off and say this meeting. So I was just, you know, going by what I heard as well. So if Ms., uh, if the clerk has them, we can read them this meeting. After that, we will proceed unless the council begins to talk about that situation in caucus, because once again, we do not read them when we're at a regular meeting. If somebody submits for the record, we submit it for the record. We do not read them. And I want, I want to make that clear. So we're not doing something that is, that has not been done since this council has been in place. Just because we're on Zoom does not mean we don't follow our rules and regulations. Uh, that doesn't mean we don't follow our rules of order, as the council is, is made up of rules. So I just want to make that clear. Uh, so, uh, our majority leader, Ms. Farrell, made a great point. I did not, once again, I did not hear, uh, our president say, read them this week, and we'll move them forward. So that's why I cut it off, because I did not hear that. Uh, and Judy asked again, because she was unclear as well, and I still didn't hear. So let's not, uh, let's not make this into, uh, rah rah about what citizens don't have. We are the most transparent council within this state of New York. We have council meetings at seven o'clock. We have city council members and county legislators who have meetings at one o'clock in the afternoon. We are the most transparent since this started COVID. You guys forgot the report that was put out. We were one of the, we've had people call us, how are you guys doing your meetings? And our county legislator had started before us. So I don't want to hear our councilmen's talk about transparency. I don't want to hear you guys talking about people's voices not being heard. That is not accurate, at the least. Anything submitted in writing goes to each council member, and you choose whether to choose not to read it, so be it. What you should do, when you do get things in writing, council members, you should read it and then address it doing miscellaneous period and say, I received something from a constituent, and talk about it. Us not reading it here does not limit their voice. And if you allow that to happen, shame on you. But if you guys want that to change, take consideration the staff, and we will have that discussion at caucus, which is the appropriate place to have that discussion, any rules change within our council. So with that being said, Ms. Gillespie, could you please read them, uh, this time, uh, and we'll be moving forward. And after that, Ms. Fredericks will be coming. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, we received a comment from Alana Klein, an Albany resident, 29 Glenwood Street, which reads as follows, "Mr. President and members of the council, as always, I hope this finds you safe and healthy. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the town of Colony recently proposed anti-panhandling law. They claim it's to prevent aggressive panhandling, but it could be used for something as simple as asking for a quarter to get on the bus. All the arguments I've read in favor of the panhandling law only doubly criminalize certain actions, harassing people, jumping in front of cars, et cetera. A few weeks ago at work, not one, but two people came up to me to complain that someone was panhandling in the parking lot. I told them, thank you for letting me know, and then didn't do anything about it. Just the other day, again at work, I noticed someone approached a customer with a cardboard sign. I went up to him and said, my man, I have absolutely no problem with what you're doing, but someone might take it some kind of way. Please be careful. These people need financial help, and I constantly hear the argument that many of them are alcoholics or drug addicts. As you are all aware, I myself am an alcoholic. These people need help either from a medical professional or social worker, not a criminal record. You think you've seen me angry before? Well, propose some kind of bull spit law like this, and you ain't seen nothing yet. Black Lives Matter." The next comment is from, was from Ariel Morton, but Ariel Morton has requested that we table the comment until the piece of legislation that it pertains to is up for discussion. Uh, the same applies for Joanne Morton, who's, who was following Ariel Morton. The next comment that I have is Marlon Anderson of 214 Larch Street. His comment reads as follows, "With over 100 people having been shot in the city of Albany, you would think that this issue would be given the priority it clearly deserves, but the city of Albany apparently believes that over 100 people being shot and far more shooting incidents than that is of low priority. You've heard it from me many times, and you're about to hear it again. Leadership, where is it? Why isn't this issue being given the concern and priority it demands from you, elected and paid leadership? How many hundreds more must be killed, must be shot or killed in this city before you take action and give this issue the priority it deserves? This is a major failure of the leadership in this city, and every leader who resides in the, should be questioned by the public as to why you have advocated your duty and responsibility to public safety in this city. Shameful." The next comment comes from Kayana Friday, and it reads as follows, "I don't appreciate my tax dollars going to racist company. Dot's Garage members of Proud Boys. I'm requesting that the city and county in their contracts with Dot's Garage..." Abigail Harris of 584 Madison echoes the comment. "I do not believe the city should be renewing contracts with Dot's Garage as their supporters of Proud Boys, which is a racist organization. If the city allows the contract with racist companies to continue, the city with, will be enabling them to unfairly target minorities due to their racist ideologies. When we allow people to function in society with racist beliefs and empower them with state legislation, we inch ever closer to fascism." The next comment submitted was from Danielle Smith of 80 Catherine Street. "Dot's Garage should absolutely not hold contracts with the city, as he is a member of a white nationalist group, Proud Boys, and we all know now. So there's no justification not to end the contracts, and also end the low-level offenses for marijuana as promised by the city over a year ago. To address the fact that the city is only arresting black residents, police reform now." John Clarkson wanted to speak in support of council members' Holy's, uh, legislation that was vetoed. He didn't provide comments where he expanded upon. Okay. Uh, Stephen Crainer also, I believe he spoke, submitted comments for writing. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you were breaking up.
Okay. Najee Friday.
Freezing.
I'm sorry. Najee Friday submitted comments. Can you hear me?
Yeah, some people are freezing up, so I don't know what, I don't know how that happened. Go ahead.
So Najee Friday also had comments, uh, regarding Dot's Garage. Uh, Dot's Garage is involved with the Proud Boys. The Proud Boys are a white supremacy hate group, and there should be no business with them. Uh, John Sipas, I believe he joined us and shared his comments live. We have a comment from Barbara Narowix, which reads as follows, "I'm writing to ask you to oppose overriding Mayor Sheehan's veto of the anti-development legislation passed last month, 158119, as it will be considered at tonight's common council meeting." Virginia Hammer provided comments, 52 South Allen. "I strongly support Mayor Sheehan's veto of Holy's..." "I strongly support mayor Sheehan's veto of HOE statute. It will not affect the projects already approved. It will only deter future projects. Albany needs involvement and people who want to live in the city, but not own houses and places to live. Develop, new developments will add to tax base and boost Albany numbers. Please do not let NIMBY stand in the way of Albany's future." Pete Sheehan spoke live. Kara Burke submitted a comment. She's of 229 Davis Ave. "I recently learned that Dots Garage has a contract with the city of Albany for towing and service. The owners of this garage have known ties to white supremacist groups, and I do not want my tax dollars going to support them." Thank you. April Purcell Bacon provided a comment to 13 Mount Hope Drive. Her comment reads as follows, "Contract with Dots Garage and their affiliation with the Proud Boys hate group. We cannot have our single contracts with people affiliated with hate groups. I understand that we will always go with the lowest bidder. I also need everyone to understand our moral compass comes into question when we are willing to work with deplorable individuals just because the price is right. We must do better. Taking down a statue shows nothing. Severing ties with someone contract or not that is proudly affiliated with a white supremacy group shows our leadership is truly in support of black lives in the city. Time to show your black and brown citizens that you actually care, and it's not just lip service. I also expect a follow-up, and I want to know the plan and the timeline." John Clarkson, he spoke live at the meeting. He submitted a comment in writing, which we'll upload to Facebook, which can be reviewed at a later date. We also received a comment that came in at 6:05 PM from Tabitha Wilson. Tabitha Wilson's comment reads as follows, "It is my understanding the owners of Dots Garage has snowflake affiliations in the city, should not be doing business with such an organization." In addition to that, an open letter from Christopher Spencer will share with all of the common councils members regarding his commitment to working with everyone and coming up with a palatable solution, a resolution, 158119. And that concludes the comments that I received for this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Frederick, go right ahead. I think I have to ask you to mute, I mean, there you go.
All right. I'll defer my comments to when we have caucus. I have a suggestion about how to go about public comments in the future, just given the remote environment we're in now.
Yeah, we can talk about that caucus, thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just comment on the Dots Garage issue. We're, as a council, well, I've done a bit of investigation on my own, and I'd still have to have a conversation with the mayor's office. There's a connection both with the Albany police and, I believe, Albany County with Dots Garage. We don't, no one wants to be prejudged, and I'm not saying we are, but let's let the facts, you know, come out. Let's make sure this is going on. And then, in the event that this is actually the case, we press. The mayor ultimately makes the decision on, on hiring, the mayor and the police in these situations, but we can certainly apply pressure based on good, hard evidence that we may find regarding Dots Garage. It's, it's intolerable in the, in the time that we live in for, for people to feel and think and hate. So it's unacceptable. And we'll be having those conversations with the administration, because they're doing some fact-finding themselves. And we'll push forward once we have the information.
Thank you. There are motion.
Mr. Johnson has to stand up before that motion is on the floor. I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Mr. President, I just want to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you to you, and I wanted to say thank you to Danielle for allowing the public's comments to be read and to just show that we are trying to accommodate. And, you know, I just want to say thank you, because I feel a lot better entering this meeting on that note.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. It's Kimbrough.
You're muted, Mr. Kimbrough.
Am I open now? Okay. Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Adjourn.
Have a good night, everybody.